Good evening. Good evening. Welcome to Athens City Council. It's Monday, December 16th. First thing we're going to have, we're going to work with a public hearing. Member Patterson, are you going to introduce the public hearing? Is it your public hearing?
It is.
Please.
Again, this is a public hearing to change one word in Title 23, which is changing the antiquated terminology of using the word handicap to using accessible in terms of features such as accessible ramp, and that's what this hearing is about.
Okay. Do we have any questions or comments?
I would just point out, this is a complimentary to the other sections of code that were changed within Athens City Code. The delay on this one, of course, is because it goes through Title 23. It requires a public hearing as well as a oversight of the Planning Commission. But again, it's essentially a nomenclature change.
So will it go from here?
No, it's already been through Planning Commission.
Planning Commission?
Approved.
Okay. So this is the final action necessarily? Does everybody understand? Yes?
No, I just want to ask a question that's on topic, but I wanted you to finish what you're saying.
I wasn't saying anything important.
Okay. One thing occurred to me. With the change, does that mean that current placards and tags and cars and so on would be changed? Would they be turned in for, to have, be renamed or relabeled? Is there any cost associated with that?
No. No, because the current accessible parking spaces, the signage, nowhere on there does it say anything in terms, other than reserved parking is all it says on there. So there's no need to go about changing anything. There's no cost associated with it, other than the 10th of assent for the ink to change the print.
Sounds good to me.
Essentially, it has a wheelchair logo, which is multilingual.
Yeah.
It's a universal design.
Yes.
But that holds true for, for the ordinance that was passed a week or so ago for its third reading, which was more extensive throughout our Athens City Code in changing things. But again, even with that, it, there's, there is no cost incurred because the signage doesn't use the term handicap on.
Any other comments or questions regarding this? No? So we will move ahead. This ordinance comes up for a third reading, and we, I believe, have agreed upon that. Looking around, I see that we do have a quorum present with all members present. We have a request for disposition of minutes for the regular session of City Council held December 2nd, actually, two sets, held December 2nd and the 9th, 2013.
I move that we dispossess the minutes.
Dispossess.
For December 2nd and 9th?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor of accepting the minutes for December 2nd and December 9th signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. The minutes are accepted. I have a request that I'm going to ask council to mull over during this evening's session. The mayor and I have talked about having a retreat kind of thing at which we would hear from the auditor and the law director, as well as the mayor, and, and just kind of talk about what the next two years is likely to bring. We talked about the two days that are holidays in January, the 2nd and 3rd, Thursday and Friday. I've already talked to the people, what's the barbecue place?
Kaiser's.
Kaiser's, out at Eclipse. They don't serve just barbecue for lunch. They have a menu that we can choose from, or we can have a buffet, and, but it isn't, I don't think, I tried to talk to the mayor, and he was busy this morning. I don't think that it's absolutely necessary that we have our, a retreat on those two days. It could happen sometime early in, in the month of January.
When were those days, Tim?
The 2nd and 3rd of January, which I'd--
That'd be the 10th and the 17th.
Excuse me?
No, he means January 7th.
January 2nd, January 3rd, Thursday and Friday.
Oh, I see.
You mean and/or?
Because I get it.
Because that was, that's the time before council takes--
Right.
--responsibility for that, the new set of council. But it could happen, as, as I said, I think it could happen early in the session, early in January. So think about that. Mayor, you--
I think the discussion we had last week was that, you know, that most of the council members have been, you know, at least one term or more. The idea is just to have you kind of refocus what you want to do, a review of, you know, the responsibilities, actions, as well as you still have committees to, to reorganize if you choose to do that. It's all up to you guys. I mean, it's your retreat. I'll be, I'd be available if you want, you know, my side on it or something like that. I know that the, we probably pull some information from the Ohio Municipal League in terms of duties, et cetera, et cetera, but that's kind of dry reading. But at the same time, I know Kathy usually does, you know, charts of accounts and some basics on financing and everything like that, but whatever you guys think needs to be done. It could be a half a day. I think regularly, she's been about a half a day session. Location is up to you and topics are up to you. It's your, it's your show, you know? But I, again, part of it is to talk about what you want to do. Part of the conversation we had last week is we bring out our old campaign things and say, okay, have we accomplished it and where do we want to go with those things? But I don't know if that's really necessary to have a report cut of that nature. But at the same time, a review of where you want the city to go and what you think you want to do in the next two years would be nice. At least a focus, and if not, just, you know, bring some eggnog and have a party. I don't know.
So the thought is in our minds. We have a couple days, two days actually, that precede the terms of council, and if that doesn't work into everybody's schedule, then we could schedule something relatively soon in the month of January. So--
I was just going to say, I won't be here, but deputy auditor Kreider could fill in for me. I've done this before. I still have old files, and I really don't mean to speak for Jennifer, but when I came on council, I was the only new person, and I think it would be really nice for her to do that. And there are some things that-- Agreed. --you don't know. You get a lot of information in the beginning, and it wouldn't hurt for even some of the people who've been on for a few years to hear some things again.
I can remember when I first came on council, her thing, it was out at the carpenter in Solvane. It was a real gym. I think you were there for that as well. I'm happy to help out, although I will, I do have to be in Columbus for, have a court hearing up there on Friday afternoon, but any other time, I would be happy to come contribute for what it's worth.
Again, there's no requirement that has to be before the first council. I mean, if you have your committees worked out.
Yeah, we are, I'm going to talk to the administration about rearranging some, some committees, yes. And if we choose not to have a retreat before council takes office legally, then we'll, I'll let that happen. I'll let you know, communicate with you soon.
So you, you want us to communicate back with you if either of those dates--
Yeah, I'm just, yeah, think about it this evening.
Okay. Because I think there'd be a certain advantage to, you know, grouping, having the discussion, going through questions, and it helps, as you say, with a fresh perspective to the members of council who've served before, and new pieces of information that have come through since we've taken office. It'd be, in many ways, I think it'd be advantageous to do it before the sessions start, because then it starts to get busy, too, with other committee meetings and council meetings.
Okay. Well, we'll, before we leave this evening, we'll take a consensus. Reports and communications from other elected officials.
Let's see. This will be the last session, I believe. That's how we're, we're framing it right now for the rest of the year, City Council, I mean. Just, the only other, the only two things I could mention in passing would be, one is that the trash and recycling will be delayed for Christmas, since I won't see you for Christmas. The other one, we have some construction going on East State Street, so please be aware of that. We put out a news release earlier today about that, so fix the median in the middle of East State Street. You can't miss it. Or please do, if you can.
Do miss it.
And that's all I really have, unless you have anything else to add?
No? Auditor, ahead?
No report.
Lotterer Lang?
No report.
I'm going to draw the law director back in. In the past, the law director has sworn in council just before we begin on, on that Monday, that first Monday. However, if there are some individuals who would like to have sworn in with family members, et cetera, law director Lang said he'd be happy to schedule that on that Thursday or Friday, keeping in mind that he's going to be gone that Friday afternoon.
Yeah. Just let me know, shoot me an email, whatever. I'm available. Parties, weddings.
However, if you can certainly bring family members, loved ones, cameras, et cetera, to, to our large swearing-in ceremony also, which takes, wow, 30 seconds. We can do that. So that's just further communication. And now I see that on our agenda, we're moving into an executive session regarding collective And so would somebody like to move, make that motion about who needs to be here, et cetera?
I so move that we hold an executive, move into executive session, and it would be with the members of council, council president, the law director, the mayor, the service safety director, the auditor, and the deputy auditor. I second.
And so we poll the members, our favor?
Aye.
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 Okay. So we have to ask audience members, this large section of people over here?
The three of them.
We--
Shouldn't take long, we hope.
Oh, is this the one that I'm?
At the end, we usually do.
Excuse me?
No.
Oh.
Oh, my, oh, they're gone. Goodbye. What's the matter? You can, you can entertain them.
They can eat.
Back, we are out of executive session.
Okay, she put out the changes.
Do I, what, your motion to amend our agenda?
Yes, I so move to amend our agenda for this evening to, for the purposes of adding an additional--
All those in favor of adding ordinance 015213 to our agenda this evening signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. The agenda is amended. And now we're going to move ahead with dealing with ordinances for third reading. Ordinance 14213, an ordinance granting a variance in the Athens City subdivision regulations to AW Taylor for property located outside the corporate limits but within the three-mile jurisdiction to allow a minor lot split, introduced by council member Fall.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that we adopt 14213.
Second.
As we've discussed many times before, this is a relatively regular process that we go through to oversee the three-mile jurisdictional planning unit that we are allowed to have via the ORC. This has been approved by the Planning Commission, and it has a variance to allow for a different width-to-depth ratio and street frontage, and it's gone through all its various public hearings and, and such.
Comments or questions? We have a motion and a second to accept ordinance 14213. All those in favor of accepting signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same, same sign. Okay, this ordinance is adopted. Ordinance 14413, an ordinance amending Athens City Code Title 23 zoning to replace the term handicap ramps to accessible ramps for persons with disabilities, introduced by council member Patterson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to make a motion to adopt ordinance 144-13.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Parkin. This particular ordinance is, again, the final in the series to, to change not only the nomenclature and how we use terminology in the city of Athens, but in my mind, is also closing a chapter on using what is, I deem, and I think everyone else would, too, as being antiquated terminology, and using the word accessibility instead of using handicap when referring to ramps, parking spaces, or otherwise throughout the city of Athens.
Comments, questions? We have a motion and a second to adopt ordinance 14413. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. This ordinance is adopted. Ordinance 14513, an ordinance to make appropriations for current expenses and other expenditures of the city of Athens, Ohio during the fiscal year ending December 31st, 2014, introduced by the Finance and Personnel Committee.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to adopt ordinance 14513.
Second.
And this is our annual budget, put together in part with a lot of hard work from mayor, the service safety director, the auditor's office staff, and review at many meetings and over the past few weeks. The proposed budget for this coming fiscal year that begins on January 1 will be $34,508,000. This is approximately a 3% increase over our budget of, of last year, which was $33,763,000. The auditor and, and mayor and the departments have been cognizant of the fact that we're operating with less estate revenues. We're also operating with no more estate tax. We are probably off, operating with a little less money than we had brought in this first year on the CCA income tax collections. That will be a little bit more flat this year. But everybody's been very careful in, in looking at the budget and reviewing it, so I wanted to thank all the staff for helping us move this forward in a timely fashion.
Any comments or questions? Council members, administration?
Again, this is the start of the budget for next year. The numbers will change. As you, as you know, every time we amend the ordinance, we'll refer to 14513. So it's, it's where we want it to be right now. We hopefully don't have to do too many major changes, but, you know, things change all the time on that. That's where we are. I don't know what else to add.
We have a motion and a second to adopt ordinance 14513. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. This ordinance is adopted. Move on to ordinance 14613, an ordinance authorizing staffing levels, a non-union pay scale, and slotting for the fiscal year ending December 31st, 2014, and repealing all ordinances inconsistent therewith and declaring an emergency, again, introduced by the Finance and Personnel Committee.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that we adopt ordinance 14613.
Second.
And this particular ordinance was reviewed several weeks ago in our finance committee meeting, and what this does is provides a listing of all of our staffing levels within the city personnel, and then the non-union pay scale, and this will be for the fiscal year that begins on January 1, 2014, and ends December 31st, 2014. So these are the pay scales for the next year for the non-union personnel.
Any comments, questions? Again, administration, again?
Total FTE, 165.1. So that's where we are in terms of number of employees for the full-time.
I'm sorry, what did you say? 160?
Says 165.1. I don't know where the .1 comes from.
That's why I was asking.
Why 1 FTE, I guess? I don't know.
That's got to be one of the council members.
We have seasonal, probably some seasonal workers and part-time workers.
I suspect we have too many deputy service safety director reports to it, because that's usually one of the .1s that show up.
Okay.
See if we can find it here.
I'll be--
We'll get there. It's close enough. If we find out a tenth of a person, we'll let you know.
We, we do have a motion and a second for ordinance 14613. All those in favor of adopting this ordinance signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. The ordinance is adopted. Ordinance 14713, an ordinance adopting a fringe benefits package for non-union personnel within the city of Athens and repealing all ordinances inconsistent therewith and declaring an emergency, introduced by the Finance and Personnel Committee.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to amend ordinance 14713.
Second.
And the purpose for amending this is to adopt some change text to the materials of the fringe union, of the non-union fringe benefits package.
We, okay. We have a motion and a second to amend. We have a motion and a second to amend ordinance 14713. All, all those in favor of amending the ordinance signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Go ahead.
And council members have received a copy of the changes that have been made to the non-union fringe benefit package. The yellow highlighted text were earlier revisions that we discussed in Finance Committee, some of them Finance and Personnel Committee a few weeks ago. Some of them were changes to certain terms and clarification of comp time. The text that council members have received tonight is, the, the new text is highlighted in dark green so that you can see, easily see that language that's been added. There's some further definition of comp time. There's also clarification of our language on Family Medical Leave Act, so that our language in our city is consistent with federal legislation. There is also some text defining sick leave and the granting of sick leave, and so that has been clarified. And then also a clarification on the donation of sick leave, so. And then further clarification on terms used on the next to last page on promotion, lateral transfer, and demotion of current employees. So just where it might have all been merged in paragraphs earlier, we've broken those, that text apart so that there's a adequate definition of each of these things.
Quite a bit of amendments. Council members have a question or a comment? Mayor Wile?
Some of the portions, like for instance, promotion, lateral transfer, and promotion, really that's an organizational one. At one point, the title was in one order, the other one was the other. Some of the other ones were, as Nisley, remember Nisley states, clarification of some of the pieces, reduction of some of the requirements in terms of, let's say, further donation of sick leave. These were discussions that went back and forth. I'd like to thank the Finance and Personnel Committee that did a lot of work, deputy auditor and the auditor's office for looking at this and doing mostly the hashing and, and the clerk, clerk of council as well, caching everything. It's been a, it's been a real assembly of, of minds to get this to straighten out and where we want it to be. A lot of discussion went into this. In other words, thanks to everybody who did this. If you want to add anything?
Did you want to add anything? No?
No, I, we're comfortable with where we've reached in terms of that paid absence day being back in there and--
Thank you.
--a benefit that a number of employees utilize infrequently but still viewed as a benefit, that they could still take advantage of. Appreciate that.
Okay, so now we're dealing with amendment of ordinance 14713. All those in favor of, of amending this ordinance signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. The ordinance has been amended.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to suspend the rules for ordinance 14713.
Second.
And the purpose of the amendment being so that we can enact this fringe benefit package in, on January 1, as the fiscal, new fiscal year begins.
I'm sorry, I didn't make clear that when we amend an ordinance, it goes back to first reading. So, so we have the motion to--
Suspend.
--suspend those rules. And adopt the ordinance. All those in favors signify by saying aye.
I'm a little confused about that. It goes back to a first reading now. So, so now we're on, but we're in the third reading.
No.
No, once it was amended, it went back to first reading.
Okay.
And now we need to suspend rules in order to pass it in one reading instead of having two more meetings.
I got it. Sorry for being dense.
That's all right. We don't do it that often.
So, I'm sorry, repeat your order?
Yes, I would like, I move to suspend the rules for ordinance 14713.
Second.
All those in, we've, we've, that was a second in unison? Okay. We have a motion to suspend the rules and a second. All those in favor of suspending the rules on ordinance 14713 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. The rules have been suspended.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to adopt ordinance 14713.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt ordinance 14713. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. The ordinance, as amended, is adopted. Moving on to an ordinance for first reading, ordinance 15113, an ordinance amending the 2013 appropriation ordinance, introduced by council member Nisley.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I move to suspend ordinance 15113.
Second.
And the purpose for suspending this is that so that this appropriation as a bookkeeping task can be accomplished before the end of the fiscal year.
We have a motion and a second to suspend the rules on ordinance 15113. All those in favor of suspending these rules, the rule signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. The rules have been suspended.
Thank you, Mr. President. You might remember in our earlier discussions about the wastewater treatment plant that we had borrowed 800, no, we had borrowed $800,000-- we had borrowed 800, no, we had borrowed $800,000 for the construction, engineering, and design work for the improvements to the plant. And we were renewing this earlier this year, paying $50,000 down, and then with a remaining balance of $750,000. Thanks to auditor Heck, we realized that we needed to take care of some bookkeeping. Earlier this year, all we did was amend the amount we were paying, appropriate the amount we were paying down, which was the $50,000. We need to make sure that we have it on the books that we're appropriating the $750,000, $750,000 to the sewer debt fund.
Technically, we are paying the bank $800,000, which is what we owed them. Then we're re-borrowing the $750,000. So it's a bookkeeping issue, as member Nysley said.
And so now we have a motion
to
to adopt.
To adopt.
We have a motion and a second to adopt ordinance 151-13. All those in favor of adoption signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. This ordinance is adopted. And we have our added ordinance, ordinance 152-13, an ordinance authorizing the adoption of an agreement with the Athens City Firefighters Local 3351 and Ohio Council 8, AFSMI, AFL-CIO, concerning wages and working conditions and declaring an emergency. Introduced by member Nysley.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to suspend ordinance 152-13.
Second.
The purpose being to pass this ordinance in a timely fashion so that we can approve the new AFSMI fire contract yet this fiscal year.
We're suspending the rules on ordinance 152-13. All those in favor of the suspension signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. The rules have been suspended. Member Nysley?
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to adopt ordinance 152-13.
Second.
And this particular ordinance has several sections to it, but what it basically does is that it accepts the employment agreement that has been reached between the Athens City Firefighters Local 3351 and the Ohio Council AFSMI, AFL-CIO. And the effective date on this fire, this fire contract then will be November 3, 2013, and will operate through November 5, 2016. And it details pay range rates of increase over the next few years and stipulations on vacation and also on fringe benefits, the fixed costs for insurance that the firefighters will have.
We have a motion and a second to adopt ordinance 152-13. Have any questions, councilmembers? Administration, you have something to add? No? Okay. All those in favor of adoption of ordinance 152-13 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. This ordinance is adopted. I see we have some other business. We have a motion to appoint John Lefelholtz to the AMAC board. Someone going to speak to that?
Thank you, Mr. President. I can briefly acknowledge that this has been discussed at the Athens Municipal Arts Commission, and they're all in support and would welcome John's appointment.
This is to replace Bill Morgan, who stepped down, who resigned from the AMAC board.
And this is, this is the mayor's appointment, correct?
By, by
Bill was.
Yeah. Well, everybody is basically recommendation and advising consent to council.
And Bill had, I guess his title or his role was to speak to you directly, I guess, or he had been
Yeah.
the mayor's special appointment, I believe, or?
I don't know if there's a difference.
Okay.
The commission. I'd have to look at that, but I was under the impression that everybody, suggestions are through me and then it's advising consent to councils.
Okay.
Although there should be a spectrum of arts involved.
Could you remind us of
John Lefelholtz, if you go down, you're driving down the street and you look at Arts West, he's the one that has that quilt motif on the, on the front of it, also on the Dairy Barn. He does quilts in general, actual quilts. I think his exhibit has been at the Dairy Barn as well nationally. Let's see, I was trying to find, I know him from Psychopath. He works on bicycles. He's given me some kind of strange artwork with bicycle parts, too. So he does sculpture as well as textiles, as well as paint. So he works on different media. I did fast, go ahead.
And he's also been involved in some of the percent for art committees, so he's done some work with the city before on that, that whole selection process.
I made the mistake of trying to Google him, and I ended up with a Wikipedia site. As well, he has his own website for his, his art. So.
My, my question was really, just remind everybody what AMAC stands for.
Oh, Athens Municipal Arts Commission. Essentially looking at public arts and policy within our city of where art goes in terms of part, public displays, I guess, but also just policy in general. We have a percentage for art for major constructions, as well as just what we have. I think Bill Morgan actually was spearheading the inventory of what we have in terms of art when he first came on board.
The most recent example would be with the reliefs on Oxbow Bridge, be an example of one of their most recent endeavors?
I would say actually the Roundabout is the best example where it's been through that process.
They also helped to develop the economic impact analysis
Right.
that was put forward on art and our economic vitality of our community.
Member Patterson?
I have a question that doesn't have anything to do with the appointment, but it does have to do with AMAC in and of itself. Is AMAC an advisory board or council to arts parks and recreation as well?
They work with arts parks and recreation, but they're not advisory. They're kind of standalone for, again, their, their mission is to look at public, the installation of art in the public purview. Something like that would occur probably if we were going to start off with, and I don't know if the Rotary Fountain was involved in that. I think the Rotary Fountain predates that, but if we're going to have another installation of that, that's probably where it would go first. They do, they do work with, there's an overlap with advisory board. I think there's a couple of members that cross over, thinking, what's the name of Beth, I think.
But they do serve in an advisory capacity. They make recommendations to the administration and city council about public art. But they're their own commission that was created by council.
Okay.
When I was on there.
So I know that there's an arts parks and recreation advisory board and now
Right.
and with AMAC, I'm just wondering if that's just a terminology issue or if there truly is overlap between them all, and I would assume the latter, that there's overlap.
There should be overlap, yes, in theory, yeah. I mean, it covers everything. We're trying to be inclusive in that.
Okay.
And if you have any questions, you always go down, stop Psychopath, and ask John about it.
We appreciate his volunteering.
Does AMAC ever appear before council to discuss?
I think it's in their bylaws to present once a year or to have a public meeting once a year. Is that correct?
I believe you have a liaison with it, so.
That's, that's my
Put a fire under him.
That's my understanding. Once a year.
I look forward to it.
Well, it would be very interesting, sure. Really, honestly
Yes.
it would be exciting for us to have that presentation.
It was rather a dormant year in terms of public art, but we had a pretty exciting time coming up, the wastewater treatment plant. So it's been good timing for them to come before.
Yeah, the HEB issue was something that came before the public and which the subcommittee looked into with depth and consideration.
So that, yeah, it would be a really great thing sometime soon to come talk to us. I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Another, another motion. Sorry, this is, we're still on a motion with this, aren't we?
I point out in terms of, I forget the bylaws, was they required for annual report, but if you have to look and say, you know, some of the other boards, commissions really don't come in front of you as citizen boards. I don't think there's ever been a presentation of the zoning board appeals.
That's statutory.
What?
The rule there is about statute, Bill.
Yes. A little bit different than what I, higher revised code.
So we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Second. To appoint John Lefelholtz to the AMAC board. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. John, welcome to the AMAC board. Just, you'll be one of the first to come visit council. Member Patterson?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to make a motion to adopt the auditor's November financial reports.
Comments? Auditor, any quick comments?
I don't think so. Thanks.
Okay, all those in favor of adoption of the auditor's report signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Okay, we have adopted the ordinance, that, that report. Now we have an opportunity for citizens to speak on legislative items and city services that have not been covered this evening. Hearing none. Before we adjourn, I ask councilmembers to think about a retreat. Would you like to squeeze it in for those couple days after, after New Year's or try to schedule for the first couple weeks of January?
I think I would prefer to squeeze it in.
I would as well.
I'd rather have Thursday than Friday.
I also.
Thursday?
Thursday.
And it was, we have a Friday problem with the auditor, so Thursday. I've already, as I said, I've talked to Mr. Kaiser at Eclipse, and we can schedule it for two-hour blocks of time, so how about nine to one-ish? Something like that. If it runs over, then we'll be okay. And we'll have some coffee and pastries to begin, and then we'll have a luncheon. Lunch, we, y'all can order from a menu or they can, they can present us with a buffet kind of thing. Do we have a preference on that?
Y'all.
Okay, how about if we just
Order.
let them present us with, with menus early on, and you can order what you feel like. Okay.
Also, if there's topics that you think that are necessary to bring up, give us a, a heads up so we can do some homework and get it to you if need be. Okay?
So it's, yeah.
I, yeah, I'd like to, again, echo what the mayor was saying. I like that idea. I know that member Nysley and I had spoken about this briefly, and that is, you know, everyone coming with, with goals, things you'd like to see within the next year, and maybe even a recap of some of the things for those of us who have served for a term or longer, some of the things that have been accomplished over the past few terms.
Yeah, I would, I would echo and acknowledge that I think short-term goals as well as like midterm and then long-term goals would be beneficial. I know the Recreation Advisory Board has put together a strategic long-term plan along with Rich Campatelli's efforts there, so I think information like that would be beneficial for all of us to familiar with and look at and consider. I think oftentimes we get caught in short-term and it's beneficial to look down the road.
I'm, I was told that there is computer compatibility, but I don't know about, about copying opportunities.
On-site.
So, well, just, I'm just suggesting that if you have things, bring some multiple copies of, something like that, so we, everybody could see what we're talking about.
And where is this?
Eclipse, plane.
Eclipse, okay.
Across from the red shop.
The big building.
Company store.
The company store. We're going to be upstairs.
Will we receive maybe a friendly reminder email? Thank you.
Okay.
A reminder email would be helpful.
Yeah.
And this is open to the public, correct?
Yes, yes, absolutely. Okay, that's my extension of adjournment. Anybody else have anything? Remember, if you need, if you feel that you want to schedule your own signing-in ceremony, talk to the law director's office.
Otherwise, it will be done
It will be done immediately before council meeting begins on
Six.
January 6.
So you want us here early?
Five minutes early.
Whatever, 30 seconds.
Don't, don't come running in like some people do.
Are you going to take new council members' pictures for the website?
What, is it because we've all aged in two years?
Two years, yeah.
We like our old pictures.
Do we have
Keep in mind.
Scott, I think we talked to him about that.
Cost in your chain of command, he can probably do it.
Okay, we, yes, we will take pictures.
Okay.
We will have pictures. Okay, anything else before we adjourn? This is a long adjournment, okay? But we have adjourned at 8:05.
Happy holidays.
Happy New Year, happy, Merry Christmas.